All right, so should we get started? Brian, are you going to lead us through this?
Yeah, I will kind of kick things off. I'm Ryan Theater riches for the any board members that may be new since last time I was in front of the board. I'm one of my roles in the district department is instructional materials committee chair. So I run through, basically, I coordinate the work that people like Mike Espinoza and John Akers did to find a resource and then present it to the instructional materials committee, which is made up of, well, people with various roles around the district, including community members at large and classified staff members, et cetera. That that group's purpose is to evaluate the process that the adoption committees led by specialists went through to choose the best resource for a course. So that that committee's job isn't to really judge the quality of the resource. That's the adoption committee. And there's a policy and procedure 2020 is what kind of guides that work. And in a sense, there's, well, there's some criteria that those committees should follow. And the instructional materials committee has those criteria also. I believe a folder was shared with you. That document is in there if you need it, but it really just comes verbatim from procedure 2020. So with that, we're going to, we have three different people presenting tonight. We're going to start with Mike Espinoza, who's going to be presenting on middle school reading. And then John Akers has, I think, three CTE adoptions to to present. And then I've got a second role as social studies specialist. I'll be presenting the AP government politics adoption. Are there any questions before we get going with Mike? Okay, with that, I can turn over to Mike Espinoza. Mike, I believe you have the ability to share your screen if you need to show any special documents or anything.
Okay, I don't know that I will unless people are fully lost and just raise a hand or throw something back. And I can share what I'm referring to. But I know that you've had hopefully an opportunity to review some of the documents that we put together and also the resource itself. We had some physical copies. Super excited to be here to present this to you guys because I started teaching in Evergreen about 22 years ago. And this is the first middle school reading adoption we've had in my time in the district. I think it going back to 1994 was the last one. So it's something that's long overdue. And as we worked around and through and focused on instructional tenants, I think we found something that is really aligned with what we want for our kids to increase their capacity as readers. So what we're kind of bringing, what we're bringing before you is something that's had a presence in our system for a while in terms of a K A adoption for the Lucy Culkins writing units that have been in place now at elementary for a little while and in middle school for several years. This is the resource that's aligned to that by the same authors. Philosophically, it's aligned with, as I said, tenant one and our, what we're trying to do around workshop and literacy instruction. So in terms of process, I won't go into that too much since, as Ryan said, the IMC committee has looked at that and approved it. But we had a representative crew of folks from our six middle schools. We met several times, we looked at a variety of resources. And they deemed this one to be really the highest quality in terms of alignment to our tenant and our belief systems around balanced literacy. And also, one of the, one of those big appeals around this resource is the acquisition of classroom libraries. I think when we do, when we look at equity around our system in terms of what kids have access to, especially now in our current climate, especially shining a light on this is high quality reading materials that are leveled and engaging and that all of our learners can access. So part of the plan that we're proposing is in addition to the units of study that we'd be providing for each of the grade levels would be to acquire classroom libraries for our teachers to use with kids. Now, we may have to come up with some creative plans around that. Ironically, all of this went through and we were really looking at either hybrid models or print in, you know, physical print curriculum resources. And as soon as that course went through, we had a global pandemic. So there's no causality there, I'm sure. But we are super excited about the possibilities around these units. So just a little bit of background on them. As I said, it's they're strongly based in student centered instruction and balanced literacy. So the units themselves provide a specific direction for teachers around whole groups, small group, individual, one-on-one conferring around reading. They're aligned to our common core standards, highly aligned. As I said, there's strong philosophical alignment with our elementary resource. It was just adopted the fountain pen out classroom resource. And so what we're really hoping for is that this provides a more streamlined progression for our kids as they emerge from elementary, from fifth grade into sixth grade. So that instructional practices in place at the middle school were strongly aligned with what's going on and what's happening at elementary, especially considering the the new adoption there. I think one of the things we're always thinking about is support for a range of learners. We have high yellow population, as I know you're all aware of, and unique learners in our system. And I think the student centered approach really provides an asset based approach to instruction where teachers are are provided guidance around standards based goal setting for kids with readings that they are growing and progression, progressing across grade levels and within a grade level. Obviously, the inclusion of high quality classroom libraries is going to go a long way towards furthering that effort. So it's another note before I wrap up here and open to questions. I will say that we've had, like I said, several, several teachers in different buildings have trialed this resource. It was part of kind of our review of it. And there was high praise. I think what teachers noticed was, especially at the sixth grade level, there was a familiarity with this kind of teaching reading workshop with kids coming out of elementary that they're not used to. We weren't used to providing at the middle level. And so in a sense, the kids were kind of ahead of the game in those classrooms over the teachers because they're used to going to the carpet and listening to interactive read alouds. They're used to small groups, reading instruction, they're used to book clubs. And so our teachers are kind of acclimating to that. Part of the plan is I've been working with curriculum colleagues and Aaron and Bill around, you know, professional development for next year. And so we're putting together really a variety of supposed self paced P D modules and in person professional development for all of our teachers, knowing that at middle school with all the transition that's going on, we have folks with new assignments. We have folks who are brand new to E L A, who've been teaching for a while and other other content areas. So we're really trying to be mindful of our audience and provide some, a wide variety of professional development so that they can acclimate to these units and the instruction that our kids need through them. I think that's about it for my little mini spiel there. So happy to take questions. Or if you need me to show you something, I can share my screen and show you. If there's anything, any other information that you want.
I guess I'll ask a question. So it sounds like we'll have like, I don't know what what the right word is, but like each kid maybe will have a novel like in high school where they get maybe a book to read because it feels like in elementary, there's books. And then I, as I even think about, you know, middle school, it doesn't feel like they like read anything specific. I'm not even sure exactly what they're doing for that part, except for maybe just articles and things. But so there'll be more like the class will read the same book and then do like discussions around it. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, we want to be a little more responsive than like a novel approach. So novel studies can be part of what teachers are doing, but the units are really based around. I guess the best example would be a teacher might be using a short, short stories or novels for interactive read aloud, kind of like you might see at elementary. So they might be moving through that as a class to demonstrate certain strategies and approaches to reading and have the teacher model that. At the same time, concurrent with that, kids are engaged in a lot of independent reading. All the research shows that our kids, regardless of where they are in our system, need to be reading independently and reading a lot. The actual recommendations for classroom libraries from the Teachers College at Columbia are over 2,000 books per classroom. I didn't, I didn't propose that, but we're getting closer to that. I'd like to get, you know, two or 300 of books into each classroom where many of our classrooms have very few books. It's widely variant. So it's really about getting a just right book in each kid's hands so that they can develop as a reader and practice the strategies and techniques of a strong reader as they're seeing their teachers model that through the whole class experience. So really, when you think about it, one classroom library of four or 500 books for 150 kids kind of sharing those books isn't even enough at this point. But it's a place to start. And as we move forward year over year, it's something we want to build on. So we really want kids engaged in their own books as well as books with the class, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
I had a question. Love this. I love this reading curriculum. But I'm curious, are we teaching some of the inquiry type processes and things to teachers across the different curriculums so that they're all speaking the same language? And say, as students in a math or a science class, those same types of skills are being moved into those classrooms as well?
Yeah, that's a great question. And that's, so the short answer is yes, and I think when you look at our instructional approaches, and certainly this is, I can speak for my colleague, Ryan, who we share an office and we've worked together for a long time, that these inquiry approaches, we've really tried over the years because before this year, as you know, P L A and social studies were combined in humanities blocks. We really tried to combine and help teachers with what are those common approaches in the research and inquiry, constructivist teaching, it all kind of comes through that workshop approach that really is great teaching regardless of the content area. I know that's big in science where, again, research and access to nonfiction texts is super important. So while there are common approaches to text that we want to cross content areas, we also want to be mindful of disciplinary specific approaches too. Like reading like a scientist is different in some ways and reading like a historian and reading like, you know, a lover of short stories and literature. But the short answer is yes, but we're also still building toward that. And so that's part of what we want to do through our focus on workshop is how are we supporting kids with that? Those kinds of approaches with a multitude of different kinds of text regardless of content. And so this curriculum kind of aligns with those approaches around workshop.
Great, thanks.
I wondered if you could compare the breadth of the libraries that you're proposing with the, with the breadth of Fontes and Penel? Yeah.
It's pretty similar, Rob. I think, I don't want to speak out of ignorance. I have done a little bit of digging into the FPC libraries. I know from a volume standpoint, what we'd be acquiring from Heinemann, there are more books per library. We also kind of have to temper that with, you know, and looking at some of the teaching assignments at middle school, we have teachers teaching multiple grade levels within E L A. So there's going to have to be some sharing, some logistical machinations that go on there. But in terms of quality, they're, they're high, highly engaging, they're leveled. We have a variety of shelves of genres, they call shelves, where you have adventure, you have literary, nonfiction, high interest, nonfiction. You have science fiction, historical fiction, there's even a unit around that. So I would say, you know, at just at a general level, they're, they're pretty close. So the kids are coming out of elementary who are used to engaging with high quality texts. They'll get that from the Heinemann libraries and the Teacher College curated libraries. And just another note around that, I know that we're, one of our emphases in Evergreen is around equity and culturally responsive teaching. What I really appreciate about the Teachers College curated libraries is that they are very attentive to presenting a wide variety of culturally responsive texts so that when all of our kids of color, kids who come from different backgrounds can see themselves reflected in these texts, whether they're fiction or nonfiction, I think that's super important. So I think there's a lot of alignment there in terms of both libraries.
That answered that, yeah, thank you. And look at the price quote, is that a one time 125,000 P D price?
Yeah, that, sure, that's for 21, for the upcoming school year. So it's actually going to be less than that. I sort of pitched it high and also it's coming down to a lower amount because, you know, at least for a while, our consultants are going to be working with us virtually, so we won't have to pay travel costs. And so some of those costs will come down quite a bit in terms of what we're doing. I think after this year, you know, a lot of what the PD they were offering this year, those costs are associated with having, providing some amount of release days for teachers so that they can work with coaches and see, you know, curriculum specialists like myself to do some planning and kind of calibrating around the resource and the teaching. So it would come, it would come down after this year and hopefully we would still be able to provide some planning time for them as they move forward with a new resource. But it wouldn't be, it would not be at that level after this year, for sure.
No, there would still be smaller, yeah, okay, there's still be a smaller amount each year as we onboard new teachers or refine something and people need to get together, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. And the $500,000 covers 24 classroom sets of the books as well as the other written materials?
And that one might also be lower too, in terms of the cost of the libraries. I think I'm doing a lot of following in Leanne Strickler's footsteps in terms of how she's worked with Heinemann. So I think we can get the shipping costs down by another 3%. And now that I have access to all of the teacher list and know exactly who's teaching what, I can more, I can clarify just exactly how many libraries we need and work with the buildings on that. But that's a good estimate.
Yeah, okay. Are there electronic versions of the texts in this offer websites and so forth?
No, there's some, there are teacher resources that are digital, but all of the student facing resources, the texts that we're acquiring are print. You know, one of the things we're looking at internally in CNI are some hybrid, hybrid avenues to provide digital texts with print text. So there's some other, like at high school, we have a platform called actively learn, which provides digital text versions of some of the print texts that they have. Because they move down the line, that's not in this proposal, but as they move down the line, that was something we were exploring extending to middle schools that have access to text.
Been thinking of that, but I'm also thinking in terms of ADA accommodations that there are some kids who do better if they can look at smaller pieces of the text at a time or even some versions of autism where one word at a time flashed on the screen is easier for comprehension, that kind of thing. Can't easily be adapted from a scanned piece of paper.
True.
So I was just wondering about thinking along those lines comparing to the costs that we're quoted thing and so forth. Okay, thank you.
Sure. Any other questions from anybody?
It's generally for all of this, yeah, one more. Said, if we can't bring the kids to school in the fall, how are they going to get to the books?
Yeah, it's funny you ask that. I was just joking, not joking with Aaron about that earlier this week around, you know, we were talking about supporting teachers and buildings with, you know, if we receive the books, you know, labeling and organizing and provisioning the classrooms. And then, oh yeah, there aren't going to be any clips, might not be any kids in those classrooms. And so what we want to do is talk about, you know, multiple ways for us to get books in the hands of kids. I think that's the most important thing and whatever that looks like. I mean, that's something that we haven't, we haven't figured out 100% yet, but we're having conversations around that, knowing that that's probably a strong possibility.
Appreciate hearing that, thank you.
I mean, we'll eventually come back.
I take your word on that, Mr. Merlino.
It will happen, there will be a day, they will be in school. And my guess is those books will still be relevant at that point.
Yes, and actually, great point, Mike. The Teachers College just did a review of all of their libraries. So they just updated all the things that will, all the different lists that we'll be pulling from for these libraries. So they're, they're pretty up to date now. And then that's something that we, as we move forward, we'll be thinking about, we'll need to add for lost books and also update. But this is pretty much a, this high level of of cost is a one time cost versus a digital cost, which ends up being a year, year over year subscription sometimes.
If there are no other questions for Mr. Espinoza, I guess we'll move on to John Akers with C T E. And I guess, Mike Espinoza, you could leave, I suppose, at this point. You're welcome to stay, but if you have dinner to go have with your family, I think, I guess your services aren't needed anymore unless someone needs you to stay.
All right, thanks, Ryan, and thanks, everybody, I appreciate it.
Bye.
Ready to go. I'm John Akers, I'm a program manager in the C T E department. One of my program areas is agriculture. And all three of the texts that I've written before you tonight are out of that department. I think what I'll do first is just make some general comments regarding the floral and the horticulture texts. The reason for that, we can save a little time here is my floral teachers are my heart teachers. So it's one group adopting two texts. And we've been on this for about a year and a half. Beth Rowe is a floral teacher at Evergreen. Joni LaFave does floral and heart for us at Heritage. And Julie Leonard is floral and heart at Mountview. So I wanted to give a little kudos to the people that actually did all the work. So we went through and we really used our standard evaluation grading forms as we've always done. So I probably don't have to cover all six of those areas with you. You're probably very familiar with that. But what we're really looking in this text, both cases really, we have, both classes teach a wide range of students. So we're looking at, including, you know, personalized learning project, learning, problem solving, something in a student friendly manner with some clear directions, objectives, illustrations, which are above average to good. And then what's becoming more and more important in C T E is more of the teacher preparation, the planning and the standards alignment. And I don't mean to minimize that we haven't always had teacher prep. But as you well know, or if you don't know, we're this, we're, we're really the standards aligned group. And we continually have to do that. Before we put any new class through, we have to do a framework. OSFRA has to approve that. And that framework has to be aligned to both core standards plus whatever standards we want to use for where we want credit. And in addition to that, nationals, national or state standards. So when we, we have a program renewal cycle in state every six years. But we're responsible every year to keep our classes up and realigned. And we're no longer, I guess, one of the top five by population. So we don't have that annual visit. But we do, we do have quite a few program audits that have come through in the time when I've been in the department. So realignment really kind of happens every year with us. And it only takes one national standard to change and we have to realign classes. So we rapidly begin kind of looking through texts in terms of standard alignments. Last summer, the art standards changed. We knew we were going to have to come in this year and we were going to have to take our floral class, our one, two floral class, which gives art standards. We're going to have to realign that. So basically, we used about four curriculum days this year plus our Java light days and about eight hours last year total to do this process. By the time January rolled around, we were ready to put the text in front of our advisory committee for comments. And so our agriculture advisory committee, which consists of about 18 community members, looked at things and we really, we really found two texts that stood out above everything else. So in talking about the floral text, we had gone for years with a floral text was really dated in 2000, semi updated in 2008. We got a little bit of curriculum update, but we're really looking at a very old text. So what we did in floral, it was first aligned to our standards for one and two, since that class has an art credit, as I mentioned. And then we looked at what else we needed as far as program alignment. And so we found in the Principles to Floral Design, the second edition from Goodhart and Wilcox. It's a brand new book, it's dated 2001. We really found how easy, how much easier it was to align to those art standards. Took us about half the amount of time as it did last time, as I remember. The art standards were better, easier for somebody, I'm not an art person, so they were very easy for me to understand. But we were very, very quickly, we were able to align those to lessons. So what this book does too is it has a whole bunch of alignment and background for teachers. The A F N R, which is Agriculture, Food Natural Resources, those standards are directly aligned right into the book. They're right in lessons. All our ag classes have to do what's called an S A E, which is a supervised agriculture experience project. That's 10 hours outside of class, but it's in any student interest area they want to be group, individual. And this book does a whole chapter on it. And then at the end of every chapter, it has good ideas about how you could do an S A E within that, in that chapter. It does an F F A leadership component, has a chapter on that, that would be our leadership component. That's optional for kids that can do F F A if they want. F F A has floral competitions. Things like that are indexed in the book. And also what we're really beginning to look at too is with the new pathways that have come out for graduation, it aligns with precision exams. So we've been looking for years for a industry cert that we can use in the floral area. And so this will be a good, a good use of that and it'll help us on that alternate pathway for students. The two things my, my parents, my teachers rather liked real well was there's a critical thinking component in the book at the end of every chapter. And there is a STEM component. And I think kids lose track of the, sometimes the fact, the STEM of the life science connection system. But the teachers really liked the critical thinking component. It comes with the easy to use online suite. I don't know if you're able to go in, I supplied some links on the electronic material we had. But the online learning suite, very, very easy to use. We were able to, it'll be online text that any, they can get it on their phone, they can get it on their Chromebook, whatever. But the, I was, the one thing I like about their online text is you can go through, use the suite, you can use the workbook, the problems that the students have. And then as teachers, we can break those down into little parts, they call them form fields. And then you can run the whole thing through, like if you're on Google Docs, you can run through Google Docs. So it doesn't have to be a third grading platform that a teacher's using. I know all my teachers now, while we're online here, are using Google Docs. And this will go right in what they're doing. We just talked about, you know, when we're coming back, they're not coming back. My teachers are super excited about this. In fact, they're kind of, they're using as much as we can use. We don't, obviously, aren't giving full access to everything yet, but they're already out using as much as they can. And they seem to have been getting real good feedback from the kids on all the new stuff. So they're doing their best they can right now online to put it into use. Really, I think it, it does a real good job as a book in dealing with college and career readiness. 4012, like I said, is really an art credit, that's the design part of the class. We're actually doing the flower arrangement. And then floral 34 is working in the shop, that's the retail experience. That's where they get a lot of the career readiness. But the book prepares them for that. So we don't have to use a separate text or a different text. So we don't have to use a separate text or a different text. And so it's really, a really neat package put together. It'd be really good if, if we have to have a new teacher in the near future. It lines just about everything out for them. My teachers were really impressed with it. So any questions or comments on the floral?
It's really exciting to see a pathway coming into shape like this.
Yeah, yes. I can move on to hort if you'd like. Now, the book we picked in hort is also Goodhart and Wilcox. So my first thought was my job particularly there would be then kind of hold them back a little bit because we don't want to pick anything just because it's in the same publisher. And, and I have to admit, my knowledge in floral is, you know, very minimal. I have taught hort though. So what we're doing in hort, both classes, like I say, get a wide range of students. So it's a lot of time where we're working with students who need the individual attention. They need to have some modification. Basically, it may be science-like recovery. So if you look at the horticulture, the horticulture is a little bit bigger challenge. We're trying to develop, like Rob said, it's another pathway coming together. Horticulture, we teach 12 and 34. The 12 gets a science credit again, or is cross credited, excuse me, like floral, the science credit. And then the 34 is more of the actual CTE class, which is more of a greenhouse management, the cultural growing aspect, aspects and landscaping. The problem with that is you got to get a text that will give enough science credit. And by that I mean like plant physiology and biology and a little bit of maybe even plant development and maybe some integrated pest management, some propagation. If you get all that with a little bit of the greenhouse management, then you usually can sit down with a college and go through a syllabus and get yourself a dual credit. And that's what we're trying to do right now is establish dual credit with Plaquimis Community College, which, which we have to do because Clark doesn't have any program. And in talking to the Clark Dean, they aren't going to have any program anytime soon. So this book actually did a really good job of that. It has enough science in it to give the credit. It also has enough to get kids started in kind of the greenhouse management part. The problem we ran to, ran into is either the book gave too much on the greenhouse management and it was aimed too high, more of a community college text. And then you didn't have any science. The other neat part is it follows that same curriculum that the other book does, the floral book. It'd be the same platform kids were using. So we have some students who may do a floral and then switch to a hort. We're doing more and more growing flowers in the greenhouse, cutting them, bringing them in, like Mountview, when we get Mountview rebuilt, we're going to have enough area out there to do some flower gardens, bring that in and have that be part of our floral store. So actually, we have more kids going across two pathways there. It's aligned to everything that the floral book is. We have precision exams again, so we'll have a, we'll actually have a ticket for graduation in that they can get an industry cert here if our, if our dual credit doesn't work out, but I'm hoping it does. The other thing that's really troubling for kids, and it's more so in hort than floral, is vocabulary. And if you got a chance to go on that companion website, they do a lot of games and flashcards and, and things with kids to help them out. And what we usually do, what we'll probably do with these two texts for sure, is buy the companion suite that the kids get, the students get. And that'll give them electronic access anywhere on any device where they can get connected. But we'll also, usually we buy a classroom set of books. And then for kids that really need that book to learn and, or it's a lot easier, maybe like illustrations. Somebody was saying step-by-step here a little while, we have kids that need to go step-by-step, those books help. And then what we usually do to help our, our special populations is where, where the parents come down, we actually give them a, a ticket number. That's not what I really want to say, but we give them an access number. They get an account. And then they have an account. So when the kid can go down to the study hall and there can be communication. The other neat part of the text I like again is those broken fields where you can take a worksheet and break it into thirds or quarters for smaller assignments. Teachers are out using this. Goodhart and Wilcox have been real good to us to give us quite a little bit of access here while we're online. So we're kind of really ramping up right now. Questions at all on the hort?
Hearing no questions, I guess rounded out with the third one, John.
Okay. All righty. The third one is AP Environmental Science. I think this probably 2018, the summer of 2018, College Board came out and said they were going to change the structure of AP Environmental Science, which has always been a course with changes in it. I taught it for years and the test was never, you never could really predict the test very well. And a lot of that was because College Board couldn't decide whether, when it got, when it got to college, were they going to give it a science or a social science credit? So late 2018, they finally decided to change the structure. And then what a couple of our teachers did, which was really good, was they went to summer training in 2019. And so what happened, when they went last summer, they figured out that the entire sequence of the course was going to change. And they were also going to bring on the science skills and mesh them into the curriculum. And that, that hadn't been a big secret, but the course sequence structure had. So what happened is we had, we were meaning anyhow, because our textbook was getting a little dated, we were using a textbook called Science Behind the Stories by Wiscott. And it was, I think, 2013. It's back there because it was when I was teaching. And so it was getting old, but it had a great learning platform for students. Pearson had a really, really, really good platform that was very adaptable for teachers. So we didn't want to give that up. But what we did do, what two of my teachers did, kind of spearheaded, was they took the sequence for the year and they took the Wiscott book and we kind of taught out of the Wiscott book with the new sequence, so to speak. And then the book we picked out, the book we want to go with is the Freeland book. It's Environmental Science for the AP course. I had, Susan Dixon had bought that for me as a supplemental text way back in its first edition. And so we were kind of able to use that. Well, to make a long story short here, maybe a long story long, but whatever. When they quit this year, when we all kind of went home, AP said, okay, that's as far as we're going to test. So wherever we stop, that's going to be the test, as I understand it. Well, we were set up real good then because we'd gone through everything in the right order. Other people working with the other texts had, they would either have covered too much of one and not enough of another. So we really kind of got the jump on it. And I think this, we have spent a long amount of time with their, well, they call it the sampling plus, but it's their curriculum online. We want to make sure that we've got something that's as good as the Pearson online curriculum as a backup. And we've, we just really recently, right before we shut down, we came to the conclusion that it was just as good. So we spent a lot of this year going over that, that electronic component that we didn't want to lose. And the other big nice part about this text is it's Andrew Freeland who teaches out of Dartmouth, but he has been on the committee for testing since AP Environmental Science was around. So I don't know what happened or what the, the big push on the test is, but it's kind of back to the way it was before. And I think getting a book from him really lines you up real good. And in addition, they, they came through with new math. One of the hardest parts of, of helping the kids and getting them to where they need to be is being able to apply the math for the test. And he's got a whole, two big sections on math and then a big section on practice math with graphing, which has direct value for the test. The other thing I like real nice about the book is it, it all, it gives you a bunch of exam tips and every book does that, I think. But it gives you two accumulative exams in the back of the book. So you really don't have to buy a study guide. And then on top of that, it, it gives you actually access to Strive for a Five, which is one of the three most popular textbooks. So everything, everything looks like this would put us in the right direction for as long as AP, the College Board decides to go in this direction. So our kids would be caught up. And I think it's really what we need to do for our kids to ensure they have the best job. Questions?
I don't have a question, but I want to make a statement that I'm looking through the PowerPoint slides and it's, it's pretty incredible. It comes with PowerPoints and everything.
Yes. Well, it's, it does a good job of giving local and background stories to all, all kinds of concepts. It's, it may not be quite as, it's a little bit higher reading than the Wiscott book with the, it had more of a story approach to it. But you're really having to move in AP to really get the kids where they need to be. And I think this book does a lot better job of, of giving them the maximum amount of information, but with the maximum amount of organization too.
So let me ask, you talked about having an excellent online tool with the Pearson website. So I understand that correctly. Are you intending to retain the Pearson website with this new text or use the new text's website?
We'll use the new text's website. It's an interesting point, Rob, and probably we don't need to go into it here, but, but I was going to bring you four textbooks this year, but we couldn't decide in regular environmental science. And we still have some, we, we will have a year, a year's worth of access to the Pearson that I hope we can use with the regular environmental science by picking portions of it out. It's very, it was very good. But I've, I've gone into this one, Dave Limberg and I spent a lot of time last month on this one. And it aligns really, really good with, with what's going on in the book. And the, the thing that's new is the science skills. They've always kind of been there, but it, it's kind of, it's what you've been talking about a little bit tonight with inquiry and research and things like that. And it's built in there more concisely. And it's about one-tenth the amount of effort for the, for the teacher. They can concentrate on nailing those things down and they don't have to spend 90% of their time moving things around to get them in the right spot. So that's not very well explained, but. So maybe we have a use for the Pearson is what I'm hoping.
Is, maybe Bill or Ryan can talk about this. It was environmental science that's going to become the eighth grade science credit instead of physics?
That's my opinion, yes.
Yeah, that already happened this year too.
Yeah. So we probably don't want to give eighth graders AP level instruction necessarily. And there are probably a couple who could handle it, but I haven't met them. Okay. I was a little shocked by the note at the bottom that one of the titles, you couldn't get access to the electronic platforms because it was a higher education text. And I'm sure we can take that offline, but it's just as a comment, it's, it's really unique to see someone claim that it's illegal to show you a product.
Yeah, I don't, I can comment back or not, whatever you, I don't know if we want to record that, but that's what I was told.
No, sometime later when we're shooting breeze.
Okay.
Talk about it. But it's just kind of shocking to see that get into the process and rule out a book. It's.
The first I ever, it's the first time I heard it at all.
Thank you.
I, I will say, Rob, just as kind of connected to that, there are some publishers who have decided they don't want to deal with the public school market and they focus just on college and they don't make it super helpful sometimes. But that's right. If you want to sell something, you need to be willing to let people look at it first. So. Anything else for John?
Thank you very much.
All right, John, thanks. Okay, well, I will wrap this up with AP Politics and, well, United States Politics and Government. I'm assuming there's some familiarity with AP courses. The College Board kind of dictates what those are. I'm going to go ahead and try to share my screen with you because I put together a little timeline. Can you see the adoption timeline there?
I can see it.
Okay. So just a couple of years ago, I was approached by the AP Politics and Government teachers, or Government and Politics, that the test had changed. And that causes some panic amongst AP teachers, certainly. The nice thing about AP courses is they're highly aligned to the College Board's requirements because the College Board puts out the test and that's kind of what they're shooting for. What's difficult is publishers sometimes aren't right, they are ready to go with a new product. So at that time, the, the teachers decided to wait and kind of make do with what they had and wait for the publishers to kind of catch up with new resources that best aligned to the new course. So we revisited that in spring of 2019 and the teachers decided that there were some products out there that, that were of high quality and aligned to the new test. The fall of 2019, I made sure there was, you know, budget for that because I didn't want to send them through a process. We have AP US Government and Politics at five of the high schools. So all the, the big four high schools and Hila all have at least. uh all the the big four high schools and Hila all have at least, well, I have one teacher, and they all have at least one section. A couple of schools have multiple sections of AP Government Politics. Since the number of teachers is small, we can get really good representation. I tried to get someone from every school involved, and every every school had their AP uh Government Politics teacher involved except for Union. Um, that teacher um had an opportunity to be involved, had an opportunity for some feedback, ultimately indicated that he was really fine with what the decision, uh what whatever decision the committee made. So I asked the AP um teachers, including the one teacher that didn't didn't uh choose to be involved with the adoption to give me, you know, to tell me what texts they would like to uh look at, and consistently, these two texts came up. Um, you can see them on the screen. One was American Government Stories of a Nation from BFW Publishers. Um, one of the authors, Karen Waples, uh is has been an AP teacher for years and is is a is a reader and and all that. The other resource was AMSCO's Advanced Placement United States Government Politics. Um, really no other title came up, and I don't know, there may not have been anything else really available at the time. Really, the nice thing about this process was ultimately we had two good choices and one was better. So the teachers all indicated that they would have been fine going with each one, with either text, would they were both highly aligned. Uh, in the folder, you can see some um data on that. We went through the course, the course guide that uh the College Board puts out and looked at the content, looked at the, looked at um basically evaluating each each of those sections in addition to some other things, other considerations, like is there bias, et cetera? The um first meeting was not well attended, but some of the folks had been through adoption processes with me before. I just wanted to kick it off and get their resources. So uh for whatever reason, it ended up only one of the teachers showed up. But he was um kind of new new to that process. I explained it in the process. Um, and then I got materials out to teachers. We had a second meeting at which point um we added a an admin representative. The twenty twenty procedure talks about having a an administrator on the committees that I guess could be uh the district level person. I I depends on the interpretation, but we asked Charlie to to join us from Evergreen. At that meeting, it was decided that um the the teachers really understood the print text well. They were more interested in learning more about the online resources that uh both publishers provided. So we set up a couple vendor presentations in March. Um, and then shortly after that, we didn't see each other for a while. Uh, we had our third meeting uh via Zoom. Um, everyone was able to make it except the teacher at Evergreen who had been on the committee. Again, the teacher from Union was not participating in the process. He had some conflict. He emailed me his feedback. Um, he was actually the only vote. Again, he said either text would be fine. He leaned towards the AMSCO one. Uh, everyone else on the committee leaned towards the BFW resource in large part because it had um just a much more robust online presence. It um offered a hardback text, which the AMSCO text does not. Again, um, I think they they're looking at marketing their products differently. It's very inexpensive, but it, because it's a soft cover, it wouldn't last um, you know, multiple years probably. So they they kind of do a subscription model that uh brings the price about comparable to what a hard text, hardback text would be anyways. Um, but their online, the AMSCO online resources were, I would say, minimal um compared to the BFW. We've um used the BFW platform um for our AP Psychology, uh which is called Launchpad. Um, and that, I mean, it's it's there as an option. One nice thing about um, well, I don't know if it's nice or not, the the way they price things is uh in a way that um you don't save money getting digital only. Uh, so in our, in the quote, you can see that there's it's a hybrid price. So it's it's around the fifteen percent more um mark. If you pay fifteen percent more than what you would pay for the print text, you get the online access. Again, the online access is more than just an online textbook. There are a lot of other resources there, including some testing supports, some teacher facing things. Another thing the BFW text had that we voted to adopt was um a wraparound teachers in addition, which was a support to teachers. The teachers on the committee were relatively veteran teachers of AP Government Politics, so that may not have been as helpful for them. And here we are uh May nineteenth, presenting to you to see if you have any questions about that um decision.
Just pulling up the quote, looking for it.
Oh, yeah, the quote, um, it I, it's an estimate on two hundred and fifty students. I asked um IT to get a a better um number of the exact number of students enrolled next year, but I haven't got that report yet. I went off of what um this year's numbers were and adjusted for what teachers thought may may have um may may change. So we kind of, the round number was two hundred and fifty units. Um, the quote comes in at uh less than fifty thousand dollars. Um, I can't remember the exact number. I think, Rob, if you're looking at it, I think it's like forty three or something. I don't know. Um, but that it comes with some gratis items that are teacher facing. In the quote, there's the physical textbook, six years of access to Launchpad, which includes a digital textbook, which obviously in a time like now would be great to have. Um, and then also a reader, which is basically there, the the College Board, when they redid the test, they chose, I think it's fifteen different documents, which are in the public domain. We can get the documents. But the reader kind of breaks them down and has some supports for the student to make sense out of something like the Federals Papers, you know, that um maybe maybe more difficult. But I'm sorry, Rob, did you have a question about the quote?
I was just trying to understand this and all of them um in terms of what's our one time upfront cost, and then year over year, what do you think it is? And I'm actually struggling to bring the document up. Do you have it on your screen? Could you show your screen?
Um, I I let me bring up the quote if I can get it. The um, it it's a PDF, I think, so.
Ah, found it. Okay.
Oh, you got it? Okay, well.
It just came up.
Um, so to answer your question, the 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 price there is a one time fee, but it only comes with six years of access. So but that's that's not an annual fee. For six years, that's all we would pay. If then, once six years is up, we need to decide, do we want to re-up online access? Frankly, with an AP course, sometimes um six years is about the time that College Board decides to change test, or with science courses, it's probably more crucial that you have uh recent recent materials. The last adoption we did for this course was over ten years ago, and the copyright date was over a dozen years ago. So it's certainly uh time for this one. But yeah, it would be a one time, that that number you see is we pay now, we don't have to pay anything else for six years. And in six years, we'll lose our online access. At that time, if we deem that important, then we need to figure out a way to fund that or or let it go.
Mike, are these adoptions coming out of this year's budget? Mike?
Say that again, Rob.
Are these adoptions coming out of this year's budget?
No, they're next year's budget.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's it's a budget for twenty twenty one, and it's been submitted, and uh the plan is to not have to go back on any of this. Uh, in my mind, uh, one of the areas that we've been lacking for years is curriculum, so we need to make sure that we've got the right curriculum for our kids. And we saw the benefit of what happened this last year with the FPC, so we need to, we need to continue that and do as much as we can. That's that's the background from my perspective on this.
Thank you.
Any other questions about AP US Government Politics? All right, well, is there anything else I can do for you then?
So you mentioned six years ago was the last adoption.
The last adoption for this course I was over ten
Oh, ten years.
And the copyright date on the book was a couple of years older than that. I I think it was a two thousand and six copyright, uh off the top of my head, but.
It just seems to me like a course like this, do they just change the test because um, I don't know, I'm just trying to think in my mind because a lot of it's Constitution and so what changes in a course like AP Gov?
And there's a, there's a document in that folder that kind of says what's new, and that will give you a better than I can because I've never taught that course, but
Yeah.
according to the teachers, um, you know, that what's changed is more where the focus is. So they have um it's, I would say it's it's more on um kind of being able to do some some mental processing with some with some information and some documents versus rote memorization of a lot of facts and details. That's one of the trends generally in in all the AP Social Studies stuff, and maybe maybe beyond the social studies context, too. But the the, there's a document in there that will kind of talk more specifically about what's changed. It's put a little bit more um focus on some things like, um, maybe I think public policy is something that's highlighted now where it wasn't before, but.
And um, I lost my train of thought. Um oh, we didn't have online access at all with the current curriculum?
There was nothing online. No, for the last um several AP adoptions, we've done, well, actually, a new adoption I've been a part of, um, the world language ones. It is uh the social studies ones of recently uh in middle school and high school. It's either been a resource that they only offer online, like Discovery Education, for instance, is an only in an online resource. Or we've done hybrid. So the AP courses have all been hybrid. So AP Psychology, um AP French, AP Spanish. Uh, AP US History, AP, I, I'm not sure about AP World. That may be before we started doing that as as a kind of a way to make sure there were some options. With this particular committee, there were um kind of a teacher or two, they're they're like, no, gotta have the online. If I have to pick one or the other, give me the online. And there were a teacher or two that were like, no, if I gotta pick one, go print only. Um, before this shutdown, I was trying to have some conversations with teachers about, well, if you need to pick one, what will it be? And then when this happened, um, we decided to say, well, maybe if something like this happens again, we want that option to be able to um uh meet kids' needs more easily via a digital um distribution of content. So that's what the proposal's for. And I think I answered your question, but maybe it, maybe not. I talked for a while, so.
No, you did. Thank you.
Thanks. Well, if you have no questions for me, I, can I ask a question? I'm just curious where the process goes from here. Um, I don't, I don't, I know you're not making a decision tonight, obviously. Um, but there, I'm not so concerned uh because it's smaller adoption, but I know um Mike Espinoza is really uh curious about when things will be approved because they've got a pretty big physical kind of um order to do that needs, uh, you know, actually, things have to get on trucks and pallets and all that.
So do we bring to the next meeting? Sorry. Is that you, Mike?
No, it's it's Bill. I, when I was uh, Lori and I were looking at um the procedure that was recently redone, twenty 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 P. And if there's no more um questions and and the board supports at this point, it would just be a recommendation that we would take to the board to to adopt these materials. So Lori and I can work on what that looks like.
At the next meeting, right? It would have to be
Correct.
part of resolution or something?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Off the top of your head, I I know I could look this up, but I've got a note here. I'm taking down. When is the next meeting?
Next Tuesday.
Great. That is about as soon as it could be.
Are we gonna need two readings?
I don't think we do.
Doesn't say that in our procedure.
No, it's, well, it's not policy. I'm just making sure.
Right, it's not a policy change.
So if it's approved in one meeting, the next meeting is next Tuesday.
Yeah, so we would approve it Tuesday, and then you go ahead and make the order, Ryan.
Well, yeah, that's uh, we'll wait for you to hear about the approval, and then we'll, I'll communicate with Mike and John, then they can move forward with uh what they need to do to order.
Yeah.
Anything else?
I would just say thanks, Ryan, for leading the process. I would say uh thanks to Mike and to uh uh John for all the work they did, and I saw Aaron and Bill on there, too, being involved with all of it. So appreciate everything you guys did. And I really do think uh we got tremendous feedback this year on the curriculum that was uh provided to the elementary, the reading curriculum, and you heard Mike, what did he say, nineteen ninety four? For a middle school adoption. So I can't remember what it was for elementary, but about every twenty five, thirty years or so, we go ahead and make an adoption, and then it gets really well received. So hopefully, we won't wait another twenty five, thirty years for the next one.
All right, well, uh, as far as I'm concerned, this is your meeting, so I'll stay as long as you want me to. Um, I don't know that I can can shut the meeting down, though. I think Lori is uh owns that, so.
Does anyone have anything else?
Nope.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thanks.